I call this work-study meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on November 9, 2023. For the record, board members present are Sally Derrick, Ileana Garza-Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. The next item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada, do we have anyone wishing to speak? Okay, having no one wishing to speak, we'll move on to the next agenda item, number three, which is our work-study discussion items. Item 3A is the Board Data Dashboard Overview. Dr. Staut?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I am going to take a minute and walk y'all through how to access the dashboard, and then I will show you a little bit about navigation, and then we will talk about next steps. I have the screens off because... Do you want me to wait? Okay. Just because of the data that is included on the dashboard. Are y'all seeing an image up on your screen right now?
Um, no. So, we first need to pull it up. One second. Oh, you said that. I thought she meant on my computer.
No, you're going to look on here as I go through the settings.
Got it, okay.
And then we'll go from there. So, this image... Oops, that's making a mess. Okay. I'd like to start off by introducing Daniel Herndon. He is our Director of Enterprise Systems and Data Analytics. And the Technology Department has three divisions. And you have met BJ Welsh. He and I met with y'all last spring to talk about cybersecurity. He is the Executive Director of Technical Services, and in his area, he has a wonderful engineering, network engineering team. He has, you know, Cory and Chris and Tally and the other amazing technicians, and then, of course, Helpdesk. During the December Board Meeting, you will be learning, you will be hearing from our trailblazing digital learning leaders. Daniel and his team are the third tier of the Technology Department, which is Enterprise Systems and Data Analytics. He is the wizard behind the scenes. Whenever y'all approve a software, as soon as it's done being approved or a purchase, it falls into his team's lap that next week, and they go and press the buttons and flip the switches so that our students and staff can access that. They're working with over two, with approximately 250 vendors at this point to make sure that students and staff have exactly what data information and access that they need. Daniel and his team are over PEMS and state data submissions. They create the course guide and master schedule along with the registrars and guidance counselors, and Dr. Hamlin and his team work with that, and then also help support attendance and enrollment, the district website, and anything and everything in PEMS, which would also include supporting human resources and the finances department. They also recently, over the last couple of years, took on all of the data validation required for TIA. When Dr. De La Rosa was here presenting to you about TIA, they have to go in and verify the scores and compare it to the state requirements for that. So, he is here tonight to answer questions and assist me because he's the expert in this area. Okay, so, the first step, Mr. Marsh sent you an email earlier this evening. If you could open up your email, please, and click the link that is in those, in that And it should open up a screen like this. Now, if you take a second on your laptop and make sure that it is in the Chrome browser, and the Chrome browser icon will flip that circle. Did anyone have it open up in Microsoft Edge or any other than Chrome?
Mine opened in Firefox, but I can get it to Chrome.
You can copy the URL out of Firefox, and then when you open Chrome, please stick it in there.
I'm good.
Now, if you look at your Chrome browser, do you see the X at the very top corner that you would use to close out of that window? See how an old smiling face picture of me is up there? Do you see that you are logged in? I chose that "unlogged in." Do you see an image that you can have of yourself or your initials, or if you have not logged in, click that area, and you should be able to log in?
Everybody good? Comes up?
All good, we're all logged in to Chrome. And Cory is here to help troubleshoot, too.
So, I'm going to need the teacher in there, I just want to be the whole screen. Hysterical, are you actually in there?
Yeah, it's me on.
You good?
Well, Cory's helping with that. The next step, the big long link took you to this sign-in screen. What you're going to do is in the right-hand edge of the URL. See, there's a star right there. I put my pointer right at the star. You're going to click that star. And that star is how you favorite that website? And so, by clicking the star, you'll get a pop-up that says Bookmark Added. Here it says IBM Analytics with Watson. I would call it Decision Add, or Dashboard, or whatever will make it memorable to you, and then click Done. When it is finished, it should pop up. It won't pop up in my bar because I have too much stuff packed in my bookmarks bar, but you'll notice where I have, right underneath the URL, I have a number of different sites, PMS, One Digital, Flubber, Google. It should pop up over there. If you decide to pack your bookmarks bar like I did, there are two arrows on the side, and my list is in there. You notice Decision Add is down at the very bottom. Cory?
Oh, wait, I think I got it. Show Bookmarks Bar. Okay, mine didn't have my bookmarks Bar.
Oh, yes.
So, I said Show Bookmarks Bar, and I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. So, now you have a direct link to that dashboard. This is the point where, if I was a lawyer, I would start doing all of my disclaimers, the first of which is this is in beta. We were excited to share it all with you, but this is not the complete finished version of the dashboard. As more data points are identified, we will continue to work with the vendor to add them. And we are still working with the vendor to work some of the bugs out. So, what we have in there is refreshed every evening, and so, the data, for example, the current enrollment, I just clicked on the dashboard, clicked Log In. When you go to Log In, you just use your regular network Log In and password, and you'll see it takes me to the enrollment portion of the dashboard. Is that our email address? That is your regular network Log In, like you would use. You don't have to do the email address. You just put the first, what you would put before the @, immediately @CFB. Let's make sure I'm... Yes. Does the dashboard up there? Okay. So, the first caveat is this is still in beta, so we will still continue working through the dashboard. The enrollment, it is updated at night with yesterday's information. And so, what you're seeing right here on the enrollment screen is not up to the minute. It is based on last night's data. The other thing is, because of the sensitive nature of the data that is in the dashboard, it is available on CFB Wi-Fi. It is available in the district, but not at home. So, you can use it whenever you're up here, but in order to get through it at home, because of the nature of the data, we would have to do a VPN and an MFA, which we're still in the process of rolling out for everybody. So, the first tab that you'll see here is Enrollment, and you'll see a number of different panels here. I'm going to go through and walk you through clicking through some of these, and then teach you how to navigate back and forth with your views. So, you'll see over here on the right-hand side, a number of pie charts that are in yellow and purple. Let's say I want to look at my at-risk percentage. I'm going to just click right there on that yellow. And did you notice all of the other graphs changed? Let me unclick it, and then you click to select it. All the other graphs change in comparison to that. So, when we're looking at our at-risk population, now you can see the gender, the ECO DIS, and the other special programs for those students. You can also see how many students at each grade level or on each campus is fitting that at-risk criteria in that yellow pie chart. And then, we'll choose a campus. Let me scroll down a little bit. I will choose here. Now, it is giving you the information for that one campus. If I decide that I don't want to look at the students that are just in that at-risk pie chart, I click it again, and it takes it away, but I still have the school identified. So, now it is giving me the students that are at that school. If I want to switch to a different school, I click on that green tab that's right there, or I switch to another school, and you'll notice the data will jump based on that school's And over here, it is saying it is just high schools, because so far, I've only clicked on high schools. But let's say that I have gone so far in the weeds, I don't know how to get back out. I'm going to, up at the very top, underneath where it says School Board Dashboard, you'll see a Reset Dashboard. It looks like a backwards arrow. It's the Refresh button, and it takes you back to the very beginning. Because as you click things and get in the weeds, sometimes you just need to go back to your original view, because you've clicked so many things, you don't remember what to go back and unclick. That happens to me. The next view that is in here under Enrollment is Withdrawals. So, I wanted to go through, as we look at withdrawals, and explain a couple of these codes to you. I asked Katie Bondy, who is part of Daniel's team, to go over some of what's called lever codes or reasons for withdrawal, because there were a couple here that were confusing to those of us that don't work, do PEMS and work as a registrar. So, the one that's at the top is the Unknown Not Listed. That, and so, actually, I asked her for information, and what she did was she built me a presentation. They are full of overachievers, and they're amazing, amazing people. Number 98 is kind of the catch-all. It is basically, we don't, at this moment, have documentation telling us where this child is. So, it could be that, oops, it could be that the child didn't show up for the first day of school. Everybody would think is going to be there on the first day, and then kids don't show up. Then they go in and they get unenrolled with a code 98 until they do show up. It could be that, at some point in the middle of October, the child just never showed up for school again. After a certain number of days, then they unenroll the child and put them as a code This is also a code that I can identify some at-risk or dropout, potential dropout kids to watch, because we don't know where they are. We don't know what happened to them. We just know they're not coming to school right now. Our code 98 is very high right now, is because of all the kids that didn't show up on the very first day of school, but then came back. It also is a student who... Let me go back a slide. They will come in and say that we're moving, you know, I'm moving to Pittsburgh. I don't know where I am going to be yet. I don't know the name of the school my kid's going to go to, but we're packing our truck, and we're driving to Pennsylvania tomorrow. The child will temporarily be a 98 until the school in Pittsburgh reaches out and says, hey, that child was one of yours. Can you share your records with us? Then they switch out of a 98 and switch to a different, a different code. One of the other codes, the other ones, like the Texas Public School, a school outside of Texas, those are fairly self-explanatory. The other one that was a bit confusing is Divide, which is code DV, and it is the fourth one down. DV is where the child is dividing a school year. For example, my daughter should be a sophomore, but she failed math last year and doesn't have enough credits to be a sophomore, so she's starting the fall technically as a freshman, but when she finishes the credits and has enough credits to be a sophomore at Christmas break, you know, at the end of the first semester, second semester, she will be in 10th grade. But she's dividing her year between two grades. So, she's a Divide. They would take, they would withdraw her out of 9th grade and put her into 10th grade, and so, she, she shows up as a DV, a Divide code. Another one that is a new code is M, which is our code for moved out of district, but the student has not landed where they're going. The 98 is when the kid just stopped showing up, never shows up. We instituted an M code for the kids, because mom comes in and says, I'm pulling my kid out today, and we're moving. We're going, like the example I used before was Pittsburgh. Now, we're coding them as an M instead of as the 98. We don't know who they are, where they're going. Well, we know who they are. We don't know where they are and/or where they're going until they land. And so, that's an internal code that we have created. The other ones are pretty self-explanatory, but if you have questions, Dr. Hamlin, or, you know, ask, reach out, Mr. Marsh, ask Dr. Eldridge, and she can make sure that we get you the information behind those leaving codes. Okay. So, that is the Enrollment Board. Let me clear it out. Yes, reset. And then, the last tab is our yearly trends. And this is our current enrollment based on, from school year '21, '22 up through this year, and you can drill down into various schools and see what their enrollments are those years. The next tab we're going to look at is Attendance. Our year-to-date attendance rate is at 94.5 right now, which is terrific. You can do same as you did on the enrollment. You could click down and see by grade level. You could see by ethnicity or by campus what their attendance rates are, and it will change The next tab is daily and monthly rates. And let me reset it, because it just has that one school identified. There we go. Now, it's reset to everything. This is not, obviously, we're in a Thursday, so this is not this week, because we haven't had school on Friday yet. This is which day of the week, what attendance, the average attendance for that day of the week. So, you can see that when you get down into high school, that the students are not attending as much on Mondays and Fridays as they are Tuesday through Thursday. You can also see the grade levels, where the monthly rates are per grade level. Green means on track. Yellow means slight lagging. And then, if you see a dark blue, that means that it's way above trend, that it's, it's doing magnificently. So, I could click and drill down into high schools, and this will show me just the high schools. Or I can say, I just want to see the monthly rates for 9th grade. And then, I can choose the schools, the individual schools, to decide, to see the enrollment on those schools. And then, again, there is a yearly trends. Let me reset it so that we are talking about everybody. And here, the yearly trends looks a little bit different. Let me make sure it's for everybody. Okay. This one has three bars. Instead of one, instead of one line on the chart showing the years on the x-axis, this one has a different, a different line for each year over the last three years. And as you can see from the comparison, we are improving on our attendance. The last two are STAR scores, and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on those, but again, like before, you can drill down on them. For example, grades three through eight. We have from year 2018, 19 up through last year. Let's say I wanted to find out how my sixth-grade females with a LEAP flag are doing. You'll notice that they changed. Here's what they look like in reading. And then, we're switching to math, and you can drill down and examine that, see how our... And you can see how different populations compare for the various STAR scores. And then, you have your EOC, which is the same thing. You can drill down on those. And so, that is our dashboard. Again, if you get stuck and go too far in the weeds, hit your Reset Dashboard button, and that takes you back to your regular landing page, and you can start all over again. The two points that I'm going to highlight again is we, this is still in development, and so, we are still working on adding and improving the data with the dashboard, and that it, right now, it works on the CFB network. It is not, you can't take it to Starbucks and log in there because of the sensitive data that's included. So, any questions?
Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Benavides?
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. When it says year-to-date, that is current school year, right? Not...
Yes, it is, it is school year.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, so, for a little bit of discussion, I am very excited about this. You guys have worked extremely hard. This has been a long time coming, for, I think, years now, since I've been on the board. So, thank you so much for the efforts. Can you share a little bit more about, I know this is the Board Dashboard? What are, what are the next steps with additional access for other people?
We also have a dashboard for Dr. Eldridge's leadership team, that they have been our guinea pigs. Dr. Hamlin has been tremendous with helping us identify issues with the attendance and enrollment, because he eats, sleeps, and breathes it these days. We were working with Patty Parker and her team on the STAR data and information with that. She's retiring her receptions next week. But as the next steps with that, last year, before the product, before the project was paused, we had played a demo, basically went through a demo for principals, and started working with information that they would need on a campus-based dashboard. We had also had meetings with a couple of the central office departments to see what data points would be useful on their dashboard, you know, for a dashboard for central office divisions. And that's really as far as we have gotten with it. But those would be the next two big steps, would be building one for campus administrators and then other central office departments. That would be custom to, like, for example, operations and curriculum instruction would probably see value in slightly different data points. And so, we go through and customize it, then meeting with the vendor to have them build those out, or determine what data would be the best to pull in order to get that information, what source would be the best to pull from.
Okay, great. Thank you. Board members, how do you see this being helpful as we are moving forward?
Evaluating the board goals, this is awesome.
For evaluating board goals?
Yeah.
Yep.
This is great.
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Shack?
I cannot remember if... I can't remember if it was 15 or 16, but we have been talking about dashboards for that long, and to see this coming together so that we can manipulate and work with data and actually have it there. Thank you to all of your team, and a great job.
Well, thank you. It's been a, it's been a shared project, and we're very proud to be able to provide it for y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on all the hard work.
Thank you.
Celebrate.
Yes.
Okay, the board will now move on to the next agenda item, number four, Closed Session. Pursuant to Section 551.074, Texas Government Code, Discussions Regarding Duties and Responsibilities of Board Members and Superintendent, to include the evaluation of the same in relation to board priorities and goals. Audience members, you are welcome to remain in the boardroom as we, as board members recess to and move to Room 4 for deliberations. The time is now 6:28 PM. The time is now 6:28 PM.
...that you like about where they are and where they're heading, and then you add on what they're going to be able to do in the next year's draft, not just in the first round, but really the first four or five rounds. They've got a lot of picks.
From the 25-yard line. Young, under pressure, overthrows, feeling the intended receiver second down.
And the fact they get...
We are back on open record, wow, we are back on record in open session, having returned from closed session. The time is now 9:19 PM. The next item on the agenda is number five, Discussion Regarding Board Priorities and Goals. Board members, do you have any comments or, about the board priorities and goals? Mr. Shackman?
Happy to report that in our closed session, obviously, we did not take any action or officialness like that. We had a very frank discussion. The board remains 100% committed behind our district goals. We are excited. Dr. Eldridge is also committed to those, and we look forward to working together in the future to strengthen all of that, because we truly believe, and this board is committed to, the fact that we want all students to achieve.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments? All right. So ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 9:20 PM.
Nice job, Randy.
Nice job, Randy. So perfect. And then you put your hat on. It'll be like, I don't know.